We're going to go ahead and get started with tonight's meeting. The first thing we need to address is public hearing. We have two public hearings. Public hearing number one is the proposed rate increase for sewer service within and and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton, the political subdivision. Councilor Gervell, you going to address that for us?
Yes, Mayor. As a preliminary matter, I would ask that a copy of the ordinances be made a part of the record tonight by reference, and also a copy of the notice of public hearing and the publication regarding that public hearing for proposed sewer service rates.
Yes.
As you guys have in front of you, the proposed rates are presented in the notice of public hearing, and that was also published in the paper. So beyond that, I don't have anything but making that a part of the record.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public would like to address the public hearing on the sewer rates? If so, come forward at this time to the podium and state your name and address the board. Hearing from no one, I'm going to close the first public hearing, and I'll open the second public hearing on the proposed rate increases for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, and political subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. As a preliminary matter, I would ask that a copy of the ordinances be made a part of the record here tonight by reference, and also a copy of the notice of public hearing that is in front of the board, and also a copy of the publication in the Warrenton County Record regarding this public hearing tonight. The information with regards to the proposed rates is set forth in the notification that was published, and that's all I have on behalf of the city, Your Honor.
Anyone from the audience want to address the water rate issue? Any one from the board want to address anything regarding that? I can go ahead and close the public hearing on the water rates. At this time, I want to open the Board of Aldermen Meeting for the city of Warrenton on June 4th, 2013. First item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If everyone will stand and face a flag, we'll recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is approval of minutes, approval of minutes for May 14th, 2013, public hearing.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14th, 2013, public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer, I believe, to approve the May 14th, 2013, public hearing comments on enhanced enterprise. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ockes Axton?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. Item three B, regular board meeting minutes of May 21st, 2013.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May 21st, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. On item four, hearing from the public, we always invite the public to address the Board of Aldermen at this time. If you would address the board, we ask you to come forward, come to the podium, and give us your names, limit your remarks to five minutes or less. So if anyone would like to address the board, please do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I'm Stan Shelton, and Mr. Mayor, a couple of months ago, I think it was, that you brought up the cell phones and, or smartphones in the chamber here, that everybody should put them away, not use them. And what I've seen from the tapes, there are still people that are using them. The company I work for, when we have meetings, if you bring it out and use it, you're asked to leave. The next time you do it, you're gone. And I've been with this company about a year now, and one gentleman was asked to leave, but it hadn't happened again. I think it's just rude, it's not professional, when you're here for this meeting, and I would consider all of your meetings, planning and zoning or whatever, the smartphones should be put away. So I'll head.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Shelton, are you addressing that to the board?
To everyone that's asked, that's required to be here for a meeting.
I made the comment because I thought it was somewhat disruptive to the concentration of the board. I don't notice it so much because I've got a lot to do up here anyway. I don't know about the board, is that, is cell phones?
I'm in agreement.
Are you in agreement?
I'm in complete agreement with that.
You know, everyone here is paid to be here for a meeting, and it's for this meeting, it's not for this.
I would agree.
And if this is that important, leave.
I'm in agreement, yep.
Okay, all right, that everybody's in agreement, we understand that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Anyone else like to address the board? At this time, if no one else from the public wants to talk, then I'm going to extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. Any of the board members like to address the public?
I briefly mentioned that I had the opportunity last week, on, I believe, the only week that the weather was actually nice, to attend the Relay for Life ceremony that was held here at City Hall. Very proud of the participation by the city staff in helping make that event go through. The entire city staff, and particularly for Chief Howdy Shell and his staff, I know they put a lot of time into it, and I think that speaks well for the city, and I know it's appreciated by the participants in Special Olympics.
Was that the Relay for Life or the Torch Room?
I'm sorry, the torch room.
Okay. You had me confused.
Yeah, I sometimes get confused also.
I heard good things about that, too, so. Anyone else? No?
Hold yourself back, huh?
Alderman Flake or Alderman Dryer, we're good? Okay. I've got just a couple of quick items, and it won't take long. One item I wanted to share with the public is the swimming pool issue. We had some issues with our slides on opening weekend. A couple days before we were opening the pool, we discovered some weak spots on the platforms, on the tubes up, that the young people slide down in, making the slides unsafe, and we were not able to open the slides that opening weekend. Weather didn't cooperate really with us that much. Anyway, we had some storms come through, and it was cold, and, but anyway, we scrambled, found a company to come in and make the repairs. They're not permanent repairs, but they're repairs that's going to get us through the season, and, Dottie, you might be going to report on this later, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I think we're going to have that same company come back in the fall and make permanent repairs. Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but anyway, they're up and running, we're open for business, so.
Yes, sir.
The other thing I want to mention to you, I received a letter from Gary and Teresa Scott. I gave all the board members a copy of it, and it's short and brief, and I'll read it to the public, and it was concerning the festival of fun that took place this past weekend. Teresa Scott kind of oversees a annual run that's been part of Catch the Glow downtown every year. I think it's a, I'm not sure it's a 5K or a 3K run.
5K.
5K. Anyway, she says, "Dear Mayor Dryer and Board Members, June 1st marked the 10th running of the Catch the Glow course in downtown Warrenton. The city has always supported this run by providing police and closing down streets. I would like to say that the support provided by the police this year was exceptional. The finished stretch in downtown streets were blocked as requested. The best part, however, was the officers that were stationed at each corner of the downtown section of the course to warn traffic and protect runners. I was even offered an encouragement, 'You're almost there,' as I turned the corner into the home stretch. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for their support of this event and the police department for the exceptional job." So I'll pass that on to the chief. We thank you also. The other item I had for the board, I want to remind you that June 11th, at 6:00, we'll have a work session, and that'll be open to the public, and that's a budget work session to work on our upcoming budget for the next fiscal year. Anyone else have any other comments, then I'm going to move along.
You know, what, can I make one comment?
Pardon me?
I'd like to make one comment before we go on.
Oh, go ahead.
I forgot to mention, but for anybody who visited the city cemeteries over the Memorial Day holiday, the extra effort that was put into making those look so good, I received numerous comments from the public about how well we take care of our cemetery, and I think that bodes well to our staff considering the amount of mowing they had to do to actually keep that up and make it look presentable for the weekend.
Great. I'm on item seven, introduction of Joyce Scipione, Recreation Secretary, whose start date was May 28th, 2013. Dottie, do you want to do those honors?
Yes. As you mentioned, Joyce Scipione did begin employment with us on May 28th, and actually had to step right in and hit the ground running, and she's doing a very good job for us. Joyce is a resident of the city of Warrenton for 20 years. She has a family that she has raised here, either in Warrenton or in the area for a short time, I understand, actually in Warrenton County. Prior to coming here, she worked for Gateway Refrigeration Warehouse for about 14 years in the customer service arena. As I said, she hit the ground running, and we've had a busy couple of weeks since she started as far as pool pass registrations and swim lesson registrations, and lots of inquiries about some of the summer programs. So she is busy and doing a very good job, and we're happy to have her.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Joyce. Nice to meet you.
Joyce lives in my neighborhood, and I've had the opportunity, I think, already this week to speak to her a couple times, and I have to ask, is it Scipione or is it Skipione?
We say Skipione.
Okay.
Is that what you said?
Scipione.
I probably mispronounced that, so. Okay. Item eight is the request to close Thurman Street between Maine and Oak on June 16th, 2013, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for after-church dinner. Anyone here want to address that?
Jason may be out of town, I'm not quite for sure. He's the one that brought it from the Freedens Church right up the street, they usually have, like, their church dinner, and they just want to close Thurman between Maine and Oak, I think for, like, just for the annual picnic.
It's just the annual picnic, they do it every year.
Make a motion to authorize the closure of Thurman Street between Maine and Oak on June 16th, 2013, from 6:00 a.m. to?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the closure of Thurman Street between Maine and Oak on June 16th, 2013, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Any discussion or concerns? I ask for a vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose likewise. Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. Item nine is a request for a liquor-by-the-drink liquor license for Two Dudes Barbecue located at 612 North Highway 47. I had a question on this, and Mellie, I don't know if you can answer this?
I can try.
On why they would be separate from the other people that were annually renewing their license?
I can actually answer that.
Can you?
Yeah, there's a change in ownership. The rest of the licenses are, was no change in ownership.
Okay, okay. That answered my question.
I make a motion to approve a liquor license for Two Dudes Barbecue. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the request for liquor-by-the-drink, for liquor license for Two Dudes Barbecue located at 612 North Highway 47. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. Item number 10, liquor license renewals for 2013, 2014. These are just annual renewals?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve liquor license renewals for 2013-2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the liquor license renewals for 2013-2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Person Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. I'm on item 11, Guy Givers, Public Works Director, discussion for waste dump, yard waste dump site for weekends. Guy, you want to address that?
Good evening, Mayor, Board. There's a request came about, about adding on to the dump sites for people to use it on the weekend, and that would require us to move the gates of the wastewater to be flat, maybe 75 yards, and have a place for people to pull in, back in, and dump the waste. And that doesn't create, that's more time than money, but the issue we're running into is a camera, we need to put a camera up, so when people pull in, we see what they're dumping.
So are, the situation we have now, that that's locked up on weekends?
It's locked on the weekend, and during the week, you come in and get a key, and you can open the gate and go up to the top of the hill.
So what you're proposing, see if I'm hearing this right, you're proposing a site that's not blocked, or?
That's correct. And we'll move it on the outside of the gate. I need to move the gates to put it so it won't get washed away in heavy rains, and then have that opened up so people can just pull in and dump the grass clippings and that. But the issue is, we don't receive.
And that'll be unattended.
Unattended. Right. And that's why we come up with the camera issue, to have that mounted.
Mayor, if I could address this issue. I brought this up from Ward 1 residents that were talking about this, and it affects all of us that work out of town during regular business hours and would like to do our yard work on the weekends and have no way of getting our yard waste disposed properly. So the plan is to have this facility outside of the dump, outside of the sewer and Public Works gate, and then back to regular hours, they will transport that yard waste.
That's correct.
That's properly dumped up into the yard waste facility for a proper disposal, but it does provide the citizens of the town the ability to dispose properly, and if we have any trouble, to track down by license plates those people who are abusing the system.
Alderman Person Castorly, I brought this up to Guy and to the chief earlier, and this was probably, when, this goes back to before their time, when I was working as city attorney, and one of the issues, the reason it got locked, and I brought this up to Greg's attention, he wasn't aware of this, were people from the county dumping yard waste, because it became really voluminous, and I just wanted to bring that up because the chief asked me to bring it up to you guys, because part of the reason it got locked was because everybody was bringing their stuff in from all over, and it became pretty significant, the amount of yard waste, it just wasn't citizens of Warrenton that were dumping their waste out there.
That was going to be one of my questions, is number one, are we going to have some kind of signposting there, explaining who is authorized to dump there, no commercial dumping?
Well, and that was one of the problems, that they had a landscaping company was doing it.
Right.
That's actually why they started blocking it, and this was probably 10 years ago, eight years ago, maybe.
So if we post that and have the ability to capture on video who may be violating that, is there something in the criminal code that would allow us to charge them with a trespassing or an illegal dumping?
Well, I think it would definitely be a trespass, but I think we could come up with an ordinance that would be specific to that, you know, it would be specific to that time period, that would say between this time and this time, you know, because I think what they do, and correct me, it used to be, they would come up and ask for the key, and then verify that they had a water or sewer bill, and then they'd be given the key, and they could go do the dump, and that kind of, that process, protocol, kind of eliminated the, you know, because it wasn't, I know one of the concerns was leaving it open about voluminous, non-organic waste, which I think would be an issue, but I just remember from, you know, just the history, why that kind of evolved to the process that did, and it makes sense, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I told the chief that, and he said, "I don't remember that being part of the discussion," I just wanted to make you aware that, that that was an issue before.
And do you think with the camera tracking, I mean, because we'll be able to see if it's landscape via truck, or if they're dumping off a refrigerator or something like that, we can actually track that?
Well, I mean, I think it's like anything else, you know, it makes sense, because I think the camera, and if you put a sign up that says, "This is under video surveillance," I think will definitely deter, and I've dealt with this in other communities, where they posted just signs, will deter the dumping of non-organic waste, which can become a serious issue, because, you know, you have couches and whatnot, but as far as out-of-county or out-of-city people out there dumping, I think you really just have to, you know, you have to wait and see, because I agree, the camera's a good idea. I just wanted to give that history as to part of it, because I didn't know if that was really brought up last time, as far as, that was one of the big issues was.
As to why?
Everybody was coming in, it became voluminous, and it became a lot of work to deal with all the yard waste that was out there. I mean, obviously, it makes sense, but I just wanted to bring that issue up. Chief asked me to bring that up.
Wasn't there another issue with a large volume of, I guess, large wood material?
Yeah, that was, I mean, that's, that's correct, Alderman Clark, it was like, bringing, like, you know.
Construction waste.
Well, and trunks, like, that's what you're, yeah, and stuff like that, stuff that, like, basically, it was, it had become like a...
We used to burn it in, in, you know, big piles, and that became illegal for us to do.
And we got that big, what do they call it?
Grinder.
Grinder.
Yeah, where we would rent that once a year, but, you know, that was the only thing that, when I was talking to chief and guy about it, I said, "Well, this is why it went that way." I just wanted to bring that back to you guys, but I think, it's like anything, you have to see what happens, see if it works, and it may not be an issue at all, it may be an issue moving forward, you know, but I think the camera system, you're at least going to be able to monitor and record what happens on there.
What's the price tag on the camera, Guy?
I got one bid for the one that would read license plates to $4,574.75, and that's not an installation.
Would it be recording to somewhere?
From SCS Security Equipment Supply, and I didn't price shop it, you know, I just wanted to give what, a rough idea.
Greg, you've got some experience with cameras, isn't it?
Right, and I actually weighed in on this thing, too, went up there and looked at it with the guy that had come out. One of the problems that we have is the distance there from where the internet connection is, which is kind of significant to this, because we can actually monitor the system over the internet. So one of the big pieces there is wireless bridges on both ends of that to make that connection happen, and then we're also using wireless cameras, and, you know, they're high-quality, commercial-grade cameras, and I think the license plate camera, which is kind of the specialized cameras, like a $550 camera as well. You know, to do it right, I think we probably do need the three cameras, we could scale that back a little bit. I think we looked at doing something around 3,500 or something.
Three thousand, $390.
But that would only give us one camera.
And I'm assuming where this is located at, these cameras would not just be monitored, it would offer some video surveillance, not only of this area, but of the entire facility or the entrance to the facility.
It would have the capability to do that, but as we, as I priced it for just this here, it was just the front gate, but it had the capability.
That would still protect us from people coming into the sewer facility, which, John, you took my thunder, because to me, that's just as big of as an exposure that should already have a camera on it from a safety standpoint, anyway. I'm kind of surprised that we don't have a security system on something that's so important to our infrastructure in the first place.
Well, since Ms. Thorne's not here, I get to ask Ms. Curry, where will the money come for this project?
That would, operational budget.
Okay, you've got, man took her off the hook, what a gentleman.
Is it something that you might want to try first and see how it works out, whether we even need to go with a camera? You don't want...
I'd be afraid to not have a camera set up before we opened it up.
Before you open it.
I guess I'm really, like, I'll go right back to it again, forget the yard waste, I'm surprised we don't have a camera on that facility, anyway. I mean, I'm shocked at that from a security standpoint.
The price of scrap metal and stuff has really helped the refrigerators and water heaters, getting out of road ditches and appearing at the...
Recycling.
Recycling place, so, and that's what I was wondering, if we're just dealing with yard waste, you know, maybe that's not a big issue.
But then you might have a truckload of shingles or a truckload of special fire.
Cement or concrete blocks, so, okay.
Well, I've had phone calls also, people on the weekend on where to take the stuff, you know, and I understand the problem, and I'd be in favor as long as we can control it and people do the right thing.
Do you want me to, then I can follow up and see what, get exact prices and get some...
I think that's what we're hearing, that the boards moving that direction.
I think it'd be a good idea, I've had inquiries into it also, so.
I just don't take it to John's house.
Okay. A short wear-bare trip to yours.
All right.
So I'll do that and follow up.
Get some firm numbers for us, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
What about your change order for Mid Rivers Asphalt?
I was asked to, we were under budget on our milling, paving, tip seal, and I contacted people that do Mid Rivers Asphalt, just doing the milling, and off of Columbus Circle, I had that extended to do some of Columbus Circle that we put in, making a request for next year's budget to have Columbus Circle grinded and resurfaced, so what I had left, that was under budget for, I picked a big part of Columbus Circle up off of that.
Is that what you're talking about, the $39,970?
That's correct.
That's the additional monies you've got left over?
And that's not completely finishing Columbus Circle, but that's getting a big part of it.
Okay.
Some of it, some of Columbus Circles has concrete underneath of it, and that's why it shows two prices, $26,640 for just the asphalt grinding, but then when it gets into the $15,330, that's running into asphalt and concrete underneath, so that's costing a little more per square yard than just a normal grind in any asphalt, because they reuse the millings off the asphalt and recycle it, and when they mill the concrete, they can't reuse the millings for the concrete off the concrete, and they have to mill it twice, once to take one layer off and then move down a little lower to get the concrete. This still puts me under budget for the two projects, and I left $3,440 for a cushion in case we got some storm drain issues and things that need to be addressed.
Guy, this is what we asked you to go back and get the pricing on last week, right? So do we need a motion to complete this? It's awfully complicated, so.
Make a motion to approve the change order submitted for the work on Columbus Circle from Mid Rivers Asphalt Incorporated.
Second.
Would you state the amount in there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't have it in front of me. $39,970?
For the addition.
Yeah, it's the change order.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Castorly to approve the change order for Mid Rivers Asphalt Inc. for Columbus Circle, in the amount of $39,970. Is that correct, Mr. Givers?
Is that correct, or is it the $44,000?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the total amount of the change order? Is it the $44,000 or the $39,000?
$39,970.
Okay, I got it right, then.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castorly?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absinthe. I'm on item 12, Gabrielle Currie, Finance Manager. Gabrielle, what have you got to say tonight?
All right, my first item is the accounts payable. You have the updated one, was that your areas today? At the last page is the list of invoices that were added... At the last page is the list of invoices that were added after the plane report that was ran on Friday. So, you have a list of, of all of those, if you wanted to look at those, but I am requesting approval to pay the invoices totaling $207,719.
Need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to pay the bills under accounts payable, in the amount of $207,719 and 3 cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alda person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero, with one eps.
Okay, the next item is the office cleaning bid. It is the recommendation of Director of Operations to accept the lowest bid, which is ABM Janitorial Services, for $15,996.96. They're located in St. Louis, we have not used that company in the past, so they did check the references on that, and the references came back good.
Have we checked references on them, and?
Yes.
You did say that?
I can't believe how much cheaper they are than everybody else.
Big difference, isn't it?
It's a very big difference.
Quite a spread.
Hope that works out for us.
Make a motion to approve the bid of ABM Janitorial Services, the low bid, in the amount of $15,996.96.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the ABM Janitorial Service of St. Louis, low bid, in the amount of $15,996.96. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alda person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero, one, one eps. Budget revision, what's that about?
There is an ordinance at the end, for you all to approve, but we're just gonna, you know, go over this, in case you guys had any questions. These are, the majority of these items, you all had already approved at other board meetings, like the capital items, reallocating the different projects.
So we're gonna pick that up on the...
Right, for actual approval, but if you guys had any questions, or any clarification, we could discuss that.
Okay, anyone have any questions, or need clarification on that? Not hearing from anyone, well, well, when do we get to the ordinance section then?
Okay.
How about employee uniform bid?
All right, there are two bids that are attached here. The first one is for the cargo and industrial pants. There were two bids that were received, and we are requesting, the Director of Operations is requesting approval to accept the lowest bid, which was the clean store. We had used those last year for the industrial pants. We had used that company, so that's what I'm requesting approval for.
You might have to explain that to me, 'cause I wasn't listening, so, your, your recommendation is the clean store for the total uniform bid?
No.
No.
For the industrial pants and cargo pants.
Okay.
The second page is the bid tab for the t-shirts and the hats, the shirts, polo shirts, t-shirts, and the hats. There was only one bid submitted for that, so we're requesting to rebid that, since the bid came in significantly higher than what we paid last year. So, we're only requesting approval to purchase the industrial pants and cargo pants, and then rebid the shirts and hats.
I'd make a motion to approve the bid of the clean store, in the amount of $1,178.15.
Fifteen cents?
No.
Oh.
That's just the work pants. What is the total amount of that? Anybody, anybody good at math? In the amount of $1,408.12 for industrial and work and cargo pants purchase?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the low bid of the clean store for industrial work pants and cargo pants, in the amount of $1,408.12. Is that right, those numbers right, Gabrielle?
Yes.
Roll call, please, unless there's a, any more discussion? Okay.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alda person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried five zero, one, one late arrival, how, how do we say that? Welcome, Alderman Ock.
Thank you.
Item 12E, approval for the police software integration with municipal court software project.
Yes. This project is included in the current budget. We are requesting to move forward with the project. This will take the different aspects of the ticket information that the police department is already entering into the system, and integrate that into the court software system, so there's not the double work of entering like the, the defendant information, officer, vehicle, citation information. So, we are requesting approval for that. The total amount in the budget was $8,800, the bid came in at $9,100, so we are requesting to reallocate $300 from the tablet computers, the iPads, since that was under budget.
And what was your total number that you're...
It is $9,100.
This is just a request for reallocation?
Is a request to move forward with the project, also.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the police software integration with municipal court software project, in the amount of $9,100. Roll, roll call, please.
Alda person Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alda Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Monthly report.
Yes, monthly report included.
Pardon me?
I have the monthly report included, if you guys have any questions about anything.
Okay.
The only question I had on the narrative was municipal court revenues were down by $14,000 for the year, if I remember that right.
$12,000.
$12,000. Is that just because there's less activity, or was it just a budget guess wasn't correct, or what do you think? I mean, if you can't answer it, that's fine, you can, you can email me or something. I was just a little surprised. I mean, it's down 12, what was the total budget, do you recall? Over $100,000? So it's, it's off 10%, maybe?
Probably less than that, I think the whole budget was down, I think.
So if it's, well, if it's less than 10%, it's not significant, so, okay.
Yeah, I can get that information, and try to get a better reason.
Any other concerns or questions about the monthly report? Any, anything else, Gabrielle?
Just a reminder of the work session on June 11th at 6:00 PM, to discuss the budget.
So noted.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, was this maybe the, what the staff lead, because they were done with their...
Sure. They, and I assume they all knew that.
As you're done with your presentation, I guess Guy is done now, and Ms. Curry. Oh, you've got something left?
He's waiting for a ride.
Some of them like to just hang around here, they like their jobs.
Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah. I'm at item 13, Dottie Phillips, Recreation Director.
Good evening, the first item that I have is the Recreation Monthly Report. I think the theme of this report is lots of rain, that's interfering with our plans. We continue to have the majority of our ballgames rained out and rescheduled, and then rained out again and rescheduled, so we're kinda battling that a little bit. I will tell you that despite my best efforts to control the weather, I can't, but we are starting to get some complaints from people, because we are not. They are, we are getting some upset people about field conditions, they're upset because the fields are wet, and we just keep very patiently and kindly reminding them that we're doing the best that we can to get them ready, when we are able to get them ready.
I will, I will tell you, after what significant rain Friday and Saturday, to held the ballgames yesterday, and the fields were in fantastic condition, there were no wet spots, at least on, I guess, A, B, and C, I, I was kind of astounded at the condition of the fields, they, they were excellent, so, I understand the frustration, but until we can control the weather a little bit better, I guess it's not a whole lot you can do.
Mayor, in the past years, we've had the President of the Board in charge of weather.
That's correct.
I'll take that on, not a problem. Thank you, Alderman.
Good luck with that. Good luck with that.
Do you have any requests?
Sunshine.
All right. So bid.
Two other notes regarding the monthly report, just wanted to make sure you all knew that this Saturday, the downtown market will be opening. We do have, I think we have five vendors, but I think that's, some of the farmers that I've spoke to said they're gonna have to wait several weeks before they can actually have produce out there to sell. So I, I think we're okay, I think it's just a matter of people having the produce to sell, so, we're gonna go ahead and open it up, and do the best we can with that. We did, on Sunday, I handed out about 100 flyers at the Wentzville Community Club Flea Market, trying to get some interest in that, it is definitely not in competition with what they're doing there, so, trying to get some of those people, found several of them that were from the Warrenton area, so I was excited about that. So I'm, I'm hoping that our efforts to make some changes to that will pay off in the long run. Also, this weekend, we have the fishing derby out at Binkley. The Elks Club is sponsoring that, they've done a, a great job with putting that together, and they, my understanding is, they put some very nice-sized catfish in, in the lake, so hopefully, we'll have some kids catching some pretty good-sized fish. The other note is that the game time, game time tournament, that group is going to be back June 22nd to 23rd, and then also July 13th to 14th. This is the group that had the tournament in May, and it went very well, so we're excited they're coming back. The July tournament was supposed to be the last one, they had booked with us, but they have since added two additional tournaments. One of them is going to be a wood bat tournament, and then the other is going to be a gold ring tournament, so I think those are gonna be very well-attended, so we're excited about, about that.
What kind of team counts are you expecting on these two coming up?
The June tournament, when I spoke to them last week, they were up, I think, 20, almost 30 teams. They were expecting to, or they were, I don't know if expecting, but hoping, to max out at 45 teams, so, hopefully, hopefully they'll do that.
Lots of people in our restaurants, and sleeping in our motels, good.
Yes.
Hey, can I ask two, two things? What is the Little Mermaid Pool Party, and the Cardboard Boat Races? Both of these sounded very interesting to me.
These are both new programs. The Little Mermaid Pool Party will be basically just aimed at probably, I think it's like six-to-10-year-olds, little girls, and it'll just be a pool party out at, out at Morgan Park Pool. They'll do like a craft, and have some, some time in the pool, and then later in August, I think we're doing one that's more targeted for the boys. The Cardboard Boat Race is actually a family event, where families can make boats out of cardboard only, and duct tape, and they get in the pool with it, and they see who can, you know, they can use cardboard paddles, and they try to see who can get the furthest.
I thought we were doing that in Binkley Woods, and I thought, this ain't gonna be that good.
No, we're not gonna do that in the lake, we'll be at the pool.
Good, that sounds neat.
You know, on your report, you had the slides were closed due to emergency repairs, what happened, you know?
Yes, sir. We, a couple of days before we were going to open the pool, we discovered that a problem that had, had been noticed earlier, had gotten worse over the winter. Basically, there was some weakness in the decking and the structure, so we had to have a company, we kinda scrambled at the last minute, to get a company to come in and repair those, and to, it's only a temporary repair for now, and then in the fall, they'll have to come back, and we'll have to look at what our options are there. They are up and operational now, though.
And correct me if I'm wrong, not only did they repair it, they also certified it to be safe?
Yes, sir. Okay.
We're listening.
The next item I have is the approval to purchase an AC unit for the concessions trailer. It hasn't got really hot outside yet, but it's gotten pretty steamy inside the concessions trailer already. So, we got bids, and we are recommending to accept the low bid from Rock Road Trailers. This was not originally a budgeted amount, however, we did have, we were able to get pretzel machines for free, instead of having to pay for them, so we have money in that budget, where we could pay for this item.
Are you talking about the trailer, the concession trailer at the swimming pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's no air conditioning in there now?
No.
I wouldn't imagine it'd get pretty hot.
It would be for me.
We need a motion on that, if we're gonna put air conditioning in.
Motion to accept a bid of Rock Road Trailers at $625 for the air conditioning.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the low bid from Rock Road Trailers for an air conditioner for the concession trailer, in the amount of $625. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alda person Kestley?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
The next item that I have is recommended changes to the existing youth soccer program. One of the items, when I first was hired, that I was asked to do, was to evaluate each of the existing programs that we had, and to use information that had been gathered from previous public meetings with participants, and their parents, and different people throughout the community. So based on those notes that I had, we actually came up with some additional questions that we wanted to ask stakeholders, and we had a public meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we only had either four or six people show up to that. So we then put together a survey online, through Survey Monkey, and did a, I think it was about a 12-question survey, asking different information of, of those who, who had an interest in soccer. We targeted the people who had participated in our program by going through our existing contacts, email contacts, and registrations, and also on our Facebook. As a result of that survey, I put together a recommend, some recommendations here, for changes that we would like to make. Some of the comments that we got, had our, some of the things had already been put into place, as far as making improvements. Parking lot was already completed, you know, there was access to the restroom, so there were some things like that, that had already been put into place. But as far as the actual soccer program itself, we identified some, some key items here, that have been outlined in this recommendation, to meet what we believe were the request of the participants. Probably the most controversial issue is whether or not we should continue with the entire league to be co-ed. There are some concerns there about whether we have... Um, there are some concerns there about whether we have the numbers to pull that off. Um, but in surveying people, fifty percent of the respondents wanted the league to be co-ed for only eight years and under. Um, twenty percent of them wanted there to be no co-ed teams, they wanted it to be all same-sex teams from the time that they began until, you know, they, they were out of the league. And then thirty percent wanted it to remain co-ed throughout. So basically seventy percent of people who replied, and I think we had, um, eighty-six respondents, um, seventy percent of them wanted it to be s- co-ed only through eight years old and then same-sex for after eight years old. Um, we looked at our existing numbers to see, can we or can we not pull it off, and it's really hard to say because you don't know, one of the thing, one of the comments we had is, is we left Warrenton and went and played, you know, wherever, because we didn't want our kids to be playing on co-ed teams after a certain age. Um, if this change occurs, we're willing to come back. But then you also have those who say, you know, there's no way you're gonna be able to pull it off, so we're just gonna go somewhere else because you're not gonna have a league this year. So it, it's really difficult to, to kind of balance that out. Um, so, my recommendation is that we go with co-ed for eight and under, um, all leagues eight and under would be co-ed. Everything above that, we will attempt to do girls' teams and boys' teams and have a league within each of the age groups. In order to do that, we are having to change our ages a little bit. Based on how we are doing ages right now, there's no way we'll make it happen because our older kids drop off too quick. I believe that's because they don't wanna play co-ed, so I'm hoping that we're gonna pull some of those kids back in. Um, but what we did is, on the registration form, we have it completed, waiting until after this meeting before we send it out, we're making the parents, as they, um, register the child, there's actually a thing they have to initial that says, "I understand that the intention is for this to be girls and boys, however, if there are not enough players, we will do co-ed. You do have the option for a refund should you choose not to do that." So they're basically acknowledging that they understand those are the changes that we're making. That way, it kinda, it allows us to attempt to make the changes, but we're not going to completely fail if we can't do it for that age and up.
Dottie, how is this going to, have you been in contact with, uh, those that run the Montgomery Soccer Association and Herman, and how's that gonna affect their participation with our league?
Um, I have had contact with Montgomery City. Um, Herman, um, we, they only had one team they brought in last year.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, that, I didn't spend a whole lot of time, um, with that. Um, as far as Montgomery City, I've had, uh, communication with the person there, I can't remember his name off the top of my head, um, and he has some concerns about whether or not they're going to be able to bring their teams into the league. Um, I think for under eight, they're going to be fine, because there's no change. Um, it's going to be the over eight, you know, they're gonna be pretty much in the same boat that we are in. However, um, in talking, you know, to different people and trying to determine how we were going to do this, one of the things that came up was, some of our teams, uh, there's a little bit of animosity about them being in our league anyway, because they do their registrations a little different than we do, or than what we have in the past, as, whereas these teams could all stay together and they'd be together year after year, and that was not being allowed in our league. Now, that's changing for us, the same as it for baseball, where we're going to allow that. Um, so, you know, it was kind of a, do we, do we make the decisions based on what we can do for our residents, acknowledging that we need those kids too, um, and we don't want to get rid of those, we want those kids to have an opportunity as well. So the hope is that they are going to be able to make the same subtle changes each year that we are making, so that they can survive within the structure that we create.
If, if they were not able to field a team, just like we are saying, we're gonna try and make this boys or girls, but it, it could end up co-ed. If we have enough to split it, boys and girls, would we allow them to participate with a co-ed team, and if so, would they compete against the boys or compete against the girls?
Um, that'll, that's something we'll have to, to look at. Um, like I said, I don't, I don't want there to be any kids that don't get to play. Um, I believe that we can figure out a way to work it out. Um, we'll just have to see what their numbers look like. I actually got their rosters from them, too, and, uh, I, I would be surprised if they can't at least pull off one team in each division.
Okay. And I understand that this is a Warrenton Recreation League and this is a league for our community. That being said, Montgomery's participated for years, uh, and I, I'm not naive as to what those people bring into this community every Saturday morning, uh, people using our fields, using our retail locations, eating at our restaurants and shopping in our stores.
Right, and, and the other thing is, they, they did bring a hundred and six kids into the league, um, which actually, it provides also, um, you know, additional competition and what have you to our league.
Right.
So, I mean, we want, we will do everything we can to make it, to make the transition easy for them as well. Um, I guess some of the other, you know, another big thing, uh, for the most part, I think sixty percent of the people felt that the lea, that the games started too soon. They did not feel that the kids should be starting in the middle of August. Um, I was kind of glad to see that, because I have to agree, it's kind, gonna be kind of nice to have a little bit of a break between baseball and softball. Um, so we will start them the weekend after Labor Day, um, and they'll have an eight-week schedule. Um, and then the other really big thing was ninety-six percent of respondents felt that the roster sizes, roster sizes were too large. They wanted there to be less kids per roster. Um, I started looking at the rosters in the beginning, and there were eighteen and twenty kids on a roster, and in some of the younger age groups, there's only four kids playing at a time, so you've got sixteen kids sitting on the bench. Um, so, um, we're gonna make that change.
My only other question, I'm sorry to drag this on, is my concern on the uniform styles, um, the Warrenton Recreation Department will be a full-front logo with then a sponsor logo is printed on the back above the numbers. Do you anticipate that causing any problems with finding sponsors?
Um, no, I don't, and the reason why is I, I checked around and I was surprised we did it with baseball, and actually, we ran into a little bit of, of some difficulty with the T-shirts, um, and getting them printed in a timely manner and what have you, because we had so many different full-front logos. Um, so I checked around with some of the other places, and typically, unless it is, you know, where you're bringing a team in and you're gonna have your own uniforms, it's typically a generic front with your sponsor logos on the back.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dottie?
My only other comment was on the fees. Um, do we work with organizations to do scholarships? Because if you have four kids, that's forty dollars, a hundred and sixty dollars, for some families can be substantial, so do we work with organizations to see if they give scholarships?
Currently, we do not, but that is one of our, um, long-range goals for the, or actually not long-range, short-range, for the two thousand and fourteen year, that is, is one of our department goals, is to establish a scholarship program.
That'd be good. Dottie, what else you got for us?
Um, the next item I have is, um, just basically wanted to make you guys aware that, um, Ozzy Smith Sports Academy is coming to Warrenton. Um, we have an agreement with them to offer a youth baseball and softball camp the weeks, uh, the week of June twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh. Um, they're gonna have two different age brackets, uh, there's a, a program called Mini Hitters, which is for ages four to six. Um, I think it's an hour and a half a day, fifty-nine dollars, they get a certificate of completion and a T-shirt, and these are professional, it, well, I'm sorry, they've either been college or minor league or professional players. Um, so very high-level instruction that they're gonna be getting. Um, then for ages seven to sixteen, they go for four hours a day for the four days, and it's a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, they get the same thing. Um, the great thing about this is, we don't have to supply any staff. Um, basically, they give us all of the instructional mater, or they supply all the instructional materials, staff, promotional items. We basically provide them with a place to, to play. Uh, we distribute hard copies of the flyers to our league participants, email and Facebook, that kind of thing, their electronic copy, um, and then they pay us five dollars per participant who registers for the Mini Hitters and ten dollars per participant for the older age group. So that's kind of just helps us recover some of the cost of the use of the facility and lining it and stuff like that. So, um, really excited about this, this is a, a, a very good, um, they have a very good reputation, so I'm excited that they're willing to come out here. Um, this is the first time they've, they've, they've come out here. They're gonna do one in Wright City as well, but, um, this year, they've decided to do it in these two communities, so.
We'll see how that works out.
Yeah. Um, the last item I have is asking for approval to transfer Shelley Winter from the seasonal worker to the part-time recreation aide. Um, Shelley started out working in concession stands, um, we had a vacancy come open, um, for our, our next level of, um, work, recreation aide. Um, she's just done a, an exceptional job, so we'd like to be able to promote her to that position now that we have a vacancy.
Okay, so you're asking that she fill that, that, the part-time position?
Yes.
How many hours a week is it about?
Um, depends on the week, um, but right now, it's a twenty, twenty-five. Um, I would anticipate, within the next two to three weeks, it's gonna increase to around thirty-five, um, because of the need for more people at the pool concession stand and the constant movement of product. Um, she is, she is primarily going to be responsible for helping us keep product where it needs to be, um, for the stands, um, and then overseeing that staff and making sure the money drops are done properly and stuff like that.
This is not gonna be, this is not gonna be a permanent part-time.
No, 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 it's seasonal.
Seasonal part-time.
Oh, this is seasonal part, okay, 'cause that, that's what we can see. She was, she's seasonal, the only, I, the read reads that she goes from seasonal worker to a part-time aide, that's why I assumed the part-time aide was a year-round position. Otherwise, why would you make a change?
No, it's, um, the sea, there's two different, it's the, that's the name, the titles of the positions. The basic position, the, the entry-level position for a season, it's actually titled seasonal worker.
Okay.
The next level up, which has a little bit more, um, responsibility and oversees some of the seasonal workers, the title of the position is part-time recreation aide.
And it is also seasonal.
But it is also seasonal, yes.
And that she will not average over thirty hours a week?
No, sir. No.
I believe that our, or, if it's regarding the healthcare, I think our ordinance is, or, that was only for the permanent part-time.
Okay, you're right. Need a motion on that? To approve that, is that right, Melody?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the transfer of Shelley Winter from seasonal worker to part-time rec-aide at a pay rate of ten dollars and fifty cents per hour.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman, pardon, the, or seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the transfer from seasonal worker to part-time recreation aide for Shelley Winter in the amount of ten fifty an hour. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Anything else, Dottie?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'm ready for our Economic Development Director, Michelle Slinter.
Good evening, I have for you tonight the economic development update. With that, you have the information from the Greater Warren County Development Meeting.
My question is, how did the public hearing go on the EDC at the county?
Um, it was well-attended, there was people there that were for it and against it. Um, actually, a lot of the same people that we had here, for, against it, were there, and, uh, the county actually did pass, and Steve Etter has submitted everything to the state.
Is that a three to zero?
And the only other thing I have for you this evening is that Brad would like me to make you aware, since he's not here tonight, that concerts in the park will start June thirteenth with Three Point Hitch, that's at Dyer Park, and that will be from seven to nine P.M.
You know, we talked about that last year, about our low attendance, and, and we've talked about we weren't getting the word out to people, and have we figured any way of doing that?
I do not know if they have or not. I have listed it on the city's website, and I have put it on, um, warrentonevents.com, which is a chamber website, so I have put them there, but I'm not working closely with Brad to know if they've ordered any signs or anything like that. I can check with him and have him let you know.
I do believe Brad's gonna put out the lawn signs that he had had last year along Highway forty-seven. Um, I think he puts those up tho, like, the week of, so they'll go out possibly next week, and then I will put it on the LED sign out front also, and I do believe we also have it on Channel one oh eight.
Good, good. Maybe that'll help.
I noticed here that you said you, we received a lead from the Regional Commerce Growth Association, but they're looking for an existing facility. Do we have a lot of existing facilities sitting around of major size?
Unfortunately, the city of Warrenton does not, and even in Warrenton, um, like in the Truesdale area, we have, you know, the, um, Warrenton Copper Facility, but we do not have a lot of large facilities. I know Karen Dorondo has a few in Wright City, but we just don't have the numbers that like St. Louis or St. Charles County has, but at least we are starting to see more movement, so hopefully, as they get bought up, we will, uh, start to see a little more activity out this way as well.
Because, now typically, is the argument is, do you build and they will come, or do you let them come first?
But if you look at that, Wright City still has a spec building that was built by Quover River, how many years ago, that's not been-
Still, still sitting there.
Still sitting vacant.
Yeah, that's true.
And I think that's pretty, pretty common this day and age, uh, I mean, companies want that structure there, but municipalities are afraid to stick their neck out there too far, so.
I know, at one of my Missouri Economic Development Council meetings, there was a, a community to the south of us, and I can't remember the name, and I think they had a spec building that they had built that sat vacant for like ten to fifteen years, because she stood up and was so excited and made an announcement that it finally had sold, and everybody was cheering for her, so.
Yeah.
Well, the city of Warrenton built one year's past, and it sat down there for three years before somebody finally bought it.
Three, three years.
But you get people to come in and look, and the building you got, is this not exactly the design that they want, you know? You always get into that all the time, so.
You know, that, this, this day and age, though, three years isn't too bad, 'cause, 'cause some of those guys, like Michelle's talking, they might have them ten or twelve years, and you still can't move them, so. It's a touchy, slippery slope.
Yeah, and it's just not a municipal issue, it's anybody who's into economic development, whether it's a private entity or public, it's the same issue, you invest the money upfront, or, so I was just kind of curious, what was available in the area?
Anything else, Michelle?
That's all I have for you this evening.
Anything, uh, any other questions from the board before Michelle? Okay. We're moving on to, uh, convert some bills to ordinances, and, uh, first bill that I see is bill number eighteen dash thirteen.
Motion for the first reading of bill number eighteen dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of bill number eighteen dash thirteen.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a contract between the city of Warrenton, Missouri and the Lamar Companies for billboards.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number eighteen dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second final reading and passage of bill number eighteen dash thirteen.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a contract between the city of Warrenton, Missouri and the Lamar Companies for billboards.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item fifteen B, bill number nineteen dash thirteen.
Motion for first reading nineteen thirteen.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for the first reading of bill number nineteen dash thirteen.
An ordinance amending the budget of the city of Warrenton, Missouri for fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number nineteen dash thirteen.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure can.
Uh, just basically, Gabrielle, the formal thing cities do, just to get their budgets in line in anticipation of year end, 'cause I never understood why we amend, other than to, we're required to, so the budget ties in, 'cause most companies amend that there's a significant change in operations, they amend their budget each year, but my understanding of the past, I know this change is one- But my understanding in the past, and this changed when I asked the question, is you really do these amendments so that at the end of the year, your budgets tie in to your records? Is that correct understanding still?
Yeah, on these items, we didn't want to be over-budget at the end of the year. And, like, the capital items, we were reallocating different projects whenever we're getting approval at the time that we're requesting, you know, to start a project. So, that was just putting these, the items in line with, with where we had spent the funds, or...
So, it really reflects what actually happened, so. No further questions.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I, I have a motion by Alderman Flake, I don't think we've got a second on it. A motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Casterly, for a first reading of Bill Number 19-13.
Second reading and passage?
Pardon me?
Second reading and passage?
Oh, second, okay, where we read it. All right. For second reading, final and passage.
An ordinance amending the budget of the city of Warrington, Missouri for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 15C, Bill Number 20-13.
Call for a first reading of Bill Number 20-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, second by Alderman, was it Clark?
Yes.
Or Ock? Clark? For first reading of Bill Number 20-13.
An ordinance amending Schedule 3 of Title 3 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, titled Prohibited Parking Pertaining to Parking Restrictions on Dryden Street.
Call for second final reading and passage of Bill Number 20-13.
Second. Can I ask a question?
You may.
This is the county legal counsel. I'm just kinda curious, why we do two, two readings the same night? Is it just an efficiency issue? Or is there a reason you should really take the time to pass once, and the next meeting read it again? What's the logic is?
You know, it's a great question. It is really kind of a philosophical issue amongst city attorneys. The statute says the ordinance shall have two readings. There is no specific delineation whether it has to be at two separate meetings or during the same meeting. I would say the majority of the cities do it during the same meeting for efficiency's sake. Sometimes, cities will even kinda split and say, well, this is an important ordinance, so we won't have a two-separate meetings. So, really, the short answer is Alderman Ock, because there really is no, you know, direct answer on that. The statute only says, must be read twice and passed, and it doesn't direct whether or not it has to be on two separate meetings or not. It's kinda philosophical amongst city attorneys.
So, would not be inappropriate if one of the aldermen had a bill that he wasn't really sure about, to go through the first reading and ask the second reading to be held in another session?
Absolutely.
So, it would give him another chance, more time to spend a look at it.
Yeah, or the board says, we wanna have a first reading at this meeting and have a second reading at a subsequent meeting, so we can look at it. That's, that happens, you know, in a lot of places, you know. I mean, you guys do it a little differently than a lot of cities, because you guys will basically vote to have me draft it, and then I draft it, so the ordinances are, I mean, I guess that would be one of the differences. Most people just present it and have the discussion during the passage of the ordinance. We typically have an agenda at a, at a meeting where you discuss it, then you guys vote to have me draft it, and then we put the ordinance on the subsequent meeting for it to be approved. So, it's probably a longer process than the majority of the cities, where a lot of cities will just have an ordinance on, the vote, then they'll discuss it actually, you know, after the vote or after the first reading and whatnot, so.
All right, thank you.
I think my last, I had Alderman Flake make that motion?
Second.
For second reading?
My second.
Or your second, Alderman Cornell's second, for second reading of Bill Number 20-13 and final and passage? Am I right on that?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Let me read it first. An ordinance amending Schedule 3 of Title 3 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, titled Prohibited Parking Pertaining to Parking Restrictions on Dryden Street.
Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Number 15B, Bill Number 21-13.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 21-13?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for first reading of Bill Number 21-13.
An ordinance repealing Section 310.045 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, regarding the use of motorized bicycles and scooters on roadways and city property.
Call for the second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 21-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Casterly, for second reading and final reading and passage of Bill Number 21-13.
May I raise a question?
You may.
I'm not trying to delay the meeting until 9:00.
You got your lady.
I know, well, so effectively, what we're doing is we're pulling all the scooter and motorized vehicle, bikes, off the ordinance, so we're solely dependent on the state law, right? Is that what we're doing?
No, we're, what happened was, we had an ordinance that regulated motorized bikes, or regulated bikes and motorized, well, bikes and motorized bikes and scooters. And then, with the issue that we had with, we just passed another ordinance that said, you can't have them at all. So, what we did is, we repealed the one that said you can't have them at all, and then we modified the ones that says that there's a subsequent ordinance, modified that one, so that it included all the additional recommendations of the chief of police. So, it's, that's why the chief said it's contradictory, because it was, because it was kind of an emergency passage to stop it.
Okay.
I, I'm trying to understand what the ordinance, it doesn't, maybe none of them do, I thought they had to be licensed, licensed operator and...
This ordinance is, is the repeal of it, repeal of the section that says you can't have them on city streets or roads. And then, the next ordinance is the one that sets forth, you have to have a license, you have to have all those...
22-13, yeah, okay.
Good.
I got behind it.
Where are we at on that, Melody?
I'm getting ready to read it, sir.
Okay.
An ordinance repealing Section 310.045 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, regarding the use of motorized bicycles and scooters on roadways and city property.
Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 15E, Bill Number 22-13.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 22-13?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer, first reading of Bill Number 22-13.
An ordinance amending Section 385 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, related to bicycles and motorized bikes.
Call for a second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 22-13.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake, for second final reading and passage of Bill Number 22-13.
In ordinance, go ahead.
Is there a licensing requirement on these?
On the, of the motorized scooter?
Yeah. I'm trying to find it. So, an insurance requirement, I guess that's what I meant to say.
Yes, the insurance requirement is here, where is it? We put, the language I came up with, basically, what I found in my research on it, Alderman Ock, was, most homeowners' insurances will cover that undersize.
Really?
So, yeah, so what I put in here was, I put, in the definition section, I put in, "A motorized bicycle shall be considered a motor vehicle for purposes of any homeowner's or renter's insurance policy." And then, what I put in, down in the 385.010 subsection B, "No one shall operate a motorized bicycle unless the motorized bicycle is insured for liability on account of accident and the terms and conditions of a homeowner's or renter's insurance policy. Proof of the insurance coverage shall be carried at all times with the operator of the motorized bicycle and shall be exhibited upon the demand of any police officer." So, it's similar to the insurance requirement for a motor vehicle, but I, my thought process was, since most homeowners will cover a liability on it, or can add that, it would be more financially feasible than to get a separate Missouri minimum $25,000 liability policy on it. So, I just put it, you know, as, as a subcategory of that.
And then, the other question John had was about, the operator had to have a license?
Subsection B, I think, states that, "No person shall operate a motorized bicycle on any highways through your alley in the city unless the person is avowed license to operate a motor vehicle."
Okay, I got that, thank you.
I, I kind of reconsolidated, so it was separate from the motorized bicycle.
Okay, great.
Does that answer your question?
Read.
Second reading.
An ordinance amending Section 385 of the Municipal Code of the city of Warrington, Missouri, related to bicycles and motorized bikes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
We have a couple comments. Will anybody tell our friend who brought this up?
I have his card up, I'll give him a call.
Okay. And secondly, Chief, just tonight, going down Lakeview, was a motorized bicycle with no helmet, and obviously not of age for a license.